Really, you know, improve our resilience, our wellbeing, and management of stress through the breath. My name's Amy, I'm a yoga teacher and a physiotherapist. So yeah, what we'll do is before we start, I'll just ask you to see if you have a few things around. Optional to have a pillow to sit on or a chair. Also, I advise you get some water. And then also a tissue because throughout this breathwork practice, there are some techniques that can make us a little bit snotty. Okay. And finally, if you have paper and pen, that can be really useful because we will be doing a little bit of journaling at the end if we have time. Lovely. In terms of what to expect, we'll go through a few different techniques. Between each technique, we will just be doing normal breathing, just normal relaxed breathing. And the reason that we do this is because we really want to see how each technique, each breathwork technique lands within our body. We want our body to have the chance to really process it. And I just want you to think about how you're feeling and I will guide you through. Oh, as me, no, it's fine. We've just started. Okay, so I've just said, you know, make sure you've got some water. Get a tissue as well. Find a nice comfortable position. Pillow is optional. And paper and pen is optional as well. Okay, lovely. Another thing, I know it's not ideal for everyone, but try and have a nice calm environment. Somewhere where you cannot be disturbed. And also, I like to have nice dim lighting as it just gets our mind and our body into that lovely relaxed space and just enhances everything. Safety wise, make sure you've read the health disclaimer below. It can be normal to feel some light tingling. A little bit of lightheadedness. If you do feel like that, just know that it is normal. Breathe normally, stop practising. And as soon as you've come back, as soon as you feel okay, have a sip of water, you can rejoin the practice. However, if you feel really intensely dizzy, intensely faint, or lightheaded or have any severe pain, then I advise that you just stop. Stop the practice, have some water, and just gently, slowly, you know, leave that practice. Positioning wise, I know we all have different abilities, so I'm sat on the floor, I've got my legs crossed and I'm on a pillow. You can do the same as me, you can be kneeling, you can have your legs straight out in front of you. Or you can be sitting on a chair. And I invite you also to lie down during the practice if that feels right for you. Staying in the same position can be a little uncomfortable. I do advise that you try and stay in a relatively still position. But if you absolutely have to move and that discomfort turns to pain, absolutely you have my permission. Okay. So, let's get started. I'll give you a few moments to gather your things and get into a comfortable position. And we'll start. So to start the practice, your hands can just be beside you or on your knees facing up. And eyes can be closed or you can just have a soft gaze just straight in front of you, whatever feels more calming and natural to you. We're just going to meditate on our breath. So we're inhaling and exhaling and we're just feeling that wave of that breath in and out. Settle into your body. And once we're breathing, what we're going to do is just focus on that first part of the breath. You can breathe in through the nose or the mouth, but I prefer preferably the nose. When we're breathing in, just notice that cool air hit those nostrils. And just repeat a few rounds of breath focusing on that sensation. Lovely. Following that path of the breath now to where that air, that cool air hits the back of the throat. Again, two breaths focusing on that sensation of the air in the back of the throat as we breathe in and out. Going even deeper, following that breath until it feels the lungs and the lungs expand. And as the lungs expand, just notice where you feel that expansion in your body. For some, it might be in those shoulders. For others, it might be in the chest. Or maybe even into the belly. Lovely, I want you to take two more breaths there, focusing on that area of expansion. Amazing. And just take a note in your head where you're noticing that expansion and just remember that. Our next breath, we're actually going to pop our hands on our shoulders. So both hands just lightly on the shoulders. And again, eyes open or close as we breathe in. Notice any movement in the shoulders and breathe out. Again, ideally breathing in through the nose and that exhale can be through the nose or the mouth. Perfect. Notice that as you breathe in, the shoulders rise just a little bit naturally. And as you breathe out, those shoulders fall down. One more breath there, inhaling as the shoulders rise. And exhaling as those shoulders draw down from the ears. Lovely. Popping hands on the chest now. And again, breathing naturally, not trying to force the breath. And just getting that feedback from your breathing. Notice what happens to the hands as you breathe in and out. As you breathe in, you might notice that subtle lifting and rising of the hands. So in, lifting and up, and as you breathe out, the hands sink down. Lovely. Few more breaths, just noticing that movement of the breath within your body. And see if you can notice any subtle differences from one side to the other. It might be that we have a little bit more movement on the right hand than the left. It's nothing to worry about. Just something to be aware of, we all have these subtle asymmetries. And just empowering ourselves with the awareness of our body is really useful. On your last breath, pop your hands around your ribs, so with a C shape with the thumb and the index finger. Just popping your hands around here, around the bottom of the ribs. Take a big breath in. And notice how your hands almost move up and out as you inhale. And down and in as you exhale. Almost imagining that those hands are like butterfly wings. And the centre of the body is the centre of that butterfly's body. And as we inhale, those wings flap up. And as we exhale, they flap down. Lovely. Three big breaths here. Sending the breath to the hands. Lovely, one more big breath. And I don't want you guys to worry if you can't really feel that movement that well, or if that movement's really subtle. This is something that can take a lot of practice and I just want you to be really patient with yourselves. Lovely, the end of your exhale, I want you to wrap your hands around yourself, give yourself a big hug. And the hands come all the way to the back of the body to around those shoulder blades. So don't worry too much about where those hands are, just make sure you're feeling the back of the body. And again, as you inhale, just notice any movement under those hands. You should feel that back subtly broaden as you inhale. And as you exhale, the back narrows just slightly. See if you can take a few breaths. Just seeing if you can notice that movement. Almost as if we have little angel wings on the back and they're broadening and coming together. Amazing. Last bit of what I call our 360 breathing, so feeling that breath all around the body. Oh, I lied, we have actually two more bits. We are going to pop our hand on our stomach. Okay. Try and relax those shoulders. And as we breathe in, we feel that stomach slightly lift and expand. And as we breathe out, the stomach falls ever so slightly. If you're struggling, just watch me, so breathing in, stomach comes out a little bit. Breathing out, stomach comes down. And again, just practise that for a few times. This is what we call our diaphragmatic breath. We're breathing through this diaphragmatic muscle. As we inhale, it lowers and our belly bulges out. Try and see if you can send that breath to the hand as if you're trying to breathe deep. And exhale fully. Lovely. So just want you to stay with that breath. If you're struggling to synchronise your breath, just let it go, go back to your normal breathing. And just see if you can feel that stomach movement up as you inhale and down as you exhale. So we might find that day to day, when we're in a really stressful situation, we're not feeling too good. We might catch ourselves breathing shallow, up into our shoulders and actually quite rapidly. So that breathing really becomes a little bit out of control. And sometimes we do have the awareness to catch ourselves in that breath. And we go, oh my god, I'm not breathing very well. At those times, it's really useful to be able to recognise that and practise our deep diaphragmatic breaths. We can slow down our breath. We can breathe deeply into the stomach. And that can always override and trick our nervous system and give us a sense of safety, engages our restful, calming nervous system. The opposite of our fight, flight or freeze. And that can really help us to become more resilient and manage our stress. So that diaphragmatic breath is really useful. As can be any of those other breaths, just becoming aware and slowing it down. Lovely. You might find that when you were breathing, trying to breathe diaphragmatically, you were just noticing that breath up in the shoulders. You were using those extra muscles up here to breathe. So what we're going to do is see if we can loosen up those muscles. And by the end of this breathwork practice, we should be able to breathe a little bit deeper into our diaphragm, which can help to engage our restful nervous system. Okay, so wherever you are, really bring those shoulders up towards your ears as you inhale. And as you exhale, let them drop down. Okay, we're going to repeat that five times. So as we inhale, shoulders come all the way up, squeeze them up to your ears. And as you exhale, just let them go. Lovely. And again, all the way up, squeeze, squeeze, squeeze and exhale, let them be heavy. Amazing. Lovely, one more time, all the way up. And all the way down. And now just some gentle neck circles. So again, don't push into pain, work within the limits of your own body. We'll bring the ear towards the shoulder, the chin towards the chest. Ear to opposite shoulder and all the way back up. Okay, and we're going to repeat this. When you are circling your head around, I want you to imagine that there's a piece of string pulling your head up and around to avoid dumping in to the neck and compressing. Okay. So big circles here. And as you circle that head around, just noticing how that sensation around the neck, maybe even into the shoulder changes. And trying to take deep, slow breaths. Amazing, going in the other direction if you haven't already. Lovely, four more here. Trying to keep those shoulders nice and relaxed. Lovely. Coming back into some stillness. And I now want you to just gently bring that right ear towards the right shoulder, just gently. So we're tilting our head to the side. And we might already feel that stretch anywhere along the side of the neck, down into the shoulder. And that's exactly what we're meant to be feeling here. Just taking a big breath in and taking a really long, slow breath out through the nose or the mouth. It might be that this is enough for you, but if you want a little bit more of a stretch, pull that opposite shoulder down, back and down, just gently. And again, being mindful not to go into any pain. But if you need even more sensation, bringing the right hand over and just very gently guiding the head towards the side. So we're trying to relax those muscles, those extra muscles of breathing that try and take over when we want to breathe deeply. These muscles up here often cause us to breathe in a really shallow manner. And we can get stuck breathing like this when we're stressed or anxious. Lovely, keeping head where it is and just gently bringing the chin towards the chest to gaze at your right knee. You'll feel that sensation move a little bit towards the back of the neck, but still at the side. Again, a few big breaths here. Breathe deep as you breathe in. And breathe out slowly. Amazing, bringing head back up and just moving it from side to side. Maybe noticing how one side now may feel a little bit different to the other now that we've stretched out that left side. This time moving ear to opposite shoulder. So left ear towards left shoulder. And again, we don't have to go as far as we did on the other side. It might be absolutely enough to stay here, but if we want to go a bit more deeper, a bit deeper, relax that right shoulder back and down. And to go even further, left hand comes up towards opposite ear and we gently guide that head down. Feeling that stretch anywhere from along the side of the neck, down into the shoulder, maybe a little bit into the arm. And this should feel like a nice stretch, okay, no pain, no discomfort. Use your breath to inhale, growing tall through the head. And exhale, maybe we can bring the head to the side a little bit more. Now bringing chin towards chest just slightly, looking at that left knee. Feel the stretch move to the back. We're staying here for three breaths. Keep it active by drawing that shoulder down. Amazing, release the head and again, just move from side to side. Maybe feeling a few subtle clicks and movements. And that's not harmful as long as you're not experiencing any pain here. Lovely. Next, we look up. You feel that stretch along the front of the neck and those little muscles at the side. So now that we're here, there's an option just to stay where you are. Or again, if you want a bit more of a stretch, placing one hand between those nobbly bits, those collarbones, and the other hand over and just lightly drawing hands down to feel that stretch at the front of the neck. Again, trying to relax those muscles that often take over when we try to breathe deeply. Keep those shoulders rolled down, looking up. Big breath in and a big breath out, maybe a little sigh. Two more times, in and out. Last one. Amazing, releasing the neck and just big shoulder rolls forwards and back. Shoulders up to the ears, back down and to the front again. Lovely. We're doing three more of these this way. And the other way, so shoulders up, forward, down and back. This way always feels a little bit more jerky. Was the shoulders come down, really pull them down. Okay, so focus on that downward movement of the shoulders. Lovely. Bringing the shoulders into some stillness now. And we move that left hand towards the side. If you're sat on a chair, I would just hold on to the side of the chair here. If you're on the sofa, you can pop that hand on the sofa, I'll move my camera down so you can see me. So hand down. And as we inhale, we just try and move that hand up. So it doesn't matter about your mobility, if you can only get to here, that's fine. We just lean to the side, if we can bring the arm all the way up, we absolutely do, and we take a big breath in. And we feel it stretch on this side here. And out. And again, in, reach the arm up a little bit more if you can. And out. Pull that right hip down as you breathe in and push the arm away as you breathe out. Lovely, we'll do the same on the opposite side. Right hand comes down to the chair or the sofa or the floor, wherever you are. The other arm comes up as far as you can, if it's there, that's okay. If you can come all the way, that's great. Breathing in and out. And notice how you see the side of my body expand as I breathe in. And out. So this part, you should really feel that breath in. Amazing. Next, right hand on the chest, left hand on the belly as we close down those eyes. As you inhale, imagine your body lifting up. And as you exhale, imagine that body sinking down. Lovely, bring in attention to the hands. As you inhale, see if you can bring that breath into that right hand. See if the stomach can rise and fall as you exhale. Of course, there might be some movement of that top hand where we've got that hand on the chest and that's absolutely natural and fine. But just see if you can minimise the movement in that top hand. And bring more movement through the breath into the belly. Lovely, a few more breaths, just like that. And remember just to come back to your normal breathing if you're feeling a little lightheaded or if it's getting a little bit too much. On your next breath, I'm going to get you to really exhale all of your air out of your body. And so we're releasing all of that waste, what we call our carbon dioxide. And it will allow us to breathe in a little bit more on our next inhale. So big inhale in. And as you breathe out, purse your lips as if you're breathing out through a straw. And just blow all of that air out, completely deflating yourself until you cannot breathe out anymore. Breathe in. And notice how much more expansion you can get after that big breath out. Again, breathing out fully. And a big expansive breath in. Lovely, last one. Breathing in all of that fresh oxygen. Lovely, pop your hands down and just breathe normally. Option to keep eyes closed or soft. As you just noticed the effects of this breathwork, this deep diaphragmatic breath and the extended exhales and the effect that this may have had on your body. Notice how your mind feels and try and assign a label or a word to your mindset at the moment. Noticing how fast or how slowly that you're breathing. And also noticing how deep you may be breathing. Do we feel like we have a bit more expansion all around our body? And do we feel like maybe we have a bit more expansion into the belly? If not, don't worry, there's lots to come. But if we do, that's really good. Amazing. Grab a sip of water if you need to. And if you do have pen and paper, feel free to jot down little bits that have worked for you and how you feel. If not, you have the opportunity to do it at the end as well. Okay, next technique we'll go through is box breathing. You may have heard of it already. We'll start really gently. So we breathe in, we hold, we breathe out, we hold and we breathe in again. So it's like in, hold, out, hold. Imagining a box in your mind. Or maybe if you have something square, like your laptop screen, your TV screen, you can trace that for the breath. What we'll do is we'll start with two seconds in, two seconds to hold, two seconds out and two seconds to hold. And we'll do four rounds of this. If this feels good for you afterwards, we can increase to three or four seconds. Use your own discretion to see how much you can do, but only go up by one second at a time in each round. Okay. Okay? So, again, pop one hand on the stomach. And we'll just take a big breath in together. And a full breath out. And when you're ready, we'll breathe in for one, two and hold for one, two, breathing out for one, two and breathe and holding for one, two. And again, in, one, two, out, hold, one, two, out, one, two, hold, one, two, in, one, two, hold, one, two, out, one, two, hold, one, two. Lovely, last one, in, one, two, hold, one, two, out, one, two, hold, one, two. And then just begin to breathe normally again. Just noticing how you feel. Noticing the effects of this breath work, this pranayama on your body. Noticing how that felt if we feel that we can increase the amount of seconds for our next round. You've got two more rounds to go and we can increase by a second each time or we can stick with that original two. So you may have noticed I used the word pranayama. And what this comes from is it's a Sanskrit language. So breath work, pranayama started in Indian culture. And prana means breath and yama means control. So it's, they really learnt to harness the control of our breath and how that can have so many benefits energetically and within our nervous system. So this is where it all stems from. Right, we will go through our next round. Feel free to stay with the two seconds or come with me for the three seconds. So one big breath in. And a big breath out. And breathing in for one, two, three, holding for one, two, three, out, one, two, three, hold, one, two, three. Amazing, breathing in, two, three, out, hold, two, three, out, two, three, hold, two, three. Lovely, in, two, three, hold, two, three, out, two, three, hold, two, three. Last one, in, two, three, hold, two, three, out, two, three, hold, two, three, and relaxing. Again, reminder, if you feel a little dizzy or a little lightheaded, just stick with your normal breathing for a bit longer. And then once that feeling has gone, returning to the practice. When we breathe in deeply and we breathe out fully and we breathe into our diaphragm, it helps to engage that really calm parasympathetic nervous system. And one of the nerves that it can control is our vagus nerve. And our vagus nerve is a key component of that calming system. It connects to all of our organs, our heart, helps to slow down our heart rate. And it helps us to feel calm, it even helps our digestion and can control things like inflammation. So it has a real, real big impact on our stress. Lovely. Amazing, guys, last round. You can stick with the two seconds or the three. Or if you want to come with me, we can go for four. Okay, so big breath in. And a full breath out. And we're breathing in for one, two, three, four, holding for one, two, three, four, out, one, two, three, four, hold, two, three, four. Again, in, two, three, four, hold, two, three, four, out, two, three, four, and hold, two, three, four. Two more, in, two, three, four, hold, two, three, four, out, two, three, four, hold, two, three, four, in, two, three, four, hold, two, three, four, out, two, three, four, and hold, two, three, four. Lovely, big breath in. And out. And again, normal breathing, eyes closed or resting. Just a bit of silence to observe your mind, observe any thoughts, any feelings that have come up. Noticing any sensations within your body. Any sensations in your fingertips? The heaviness of your sit bones upon the ground. Lovely. Okay. What we'll do next is a technique that's called humming by breath or a bhashtrika, pranayama. So it looks a bit funny, but I want you to try it, see how it feels. What we do, I'm just going to show you first, but keep your ears uncovered for now. Find your tragus, that little bony bit that we often get pierced. I don't have it pierced, but some of us do. And we're going to put our index finger over and we're just going to close our ear hole with it. Keep it open for now. The reason that we're doing this is because we have that calming nerve, that vagus nerve. We have a really lovely accessible branch in our ear. And actually, when we do this breath and this humming, if we focus on the sensation within the ear, can help to stimulate that calming vagus nerve. So it's a lovely technique to use. So we take a big breath in, we close the ears and instead of breathing out, we hum. And we feel the vibration of that hum within our ears. So, sorry, excuse my cat. We're going to do that five times together. Okay, so big breath in. Big breath out. Close the ears, next breath in. Don't leave me hanging, guys, four more times, inhale. Lovely, two more, keep going, big breath in. And humming. Last one, make it really big, really loud. Relaxing down after your last one. Resting eyes or keeping them closed, then just notice how your body feels. Maybe finding some stillness within the mind. Almost like we've had a little wipe over, a little reset. Notice the temperature of your ears. As we've increased the blood flow to that area. Notice the sensation at the front of your forehead. And maybe just noticing a stillness within your body. Always, oh, can't speak, always remembering that certain techniques are really going to work for you and some just won't resonate with you so much and that's fine. You know, some of you might have just found this technique hilarious and some would have really enjoyed it. So yeah, just noticing how that feels for you. Amazing. Okay. We're going to come, time flies when we're having fun. Feel like this is going very fast. We're going to go into our, I think will be our last breath work, our last pranayama. It's called, or in Western world, we'll call it single nostril breathing. In ancient Indian culture, we call it nadi shodhana. And it's single nostril breathing. And you know, in ancient Indian culture, they say it's to balance the nervous system, our fight, flight, freeze nervous system and our rest and digest. So, and it's acknowledged that none of these systems are inherently bad. We shouldn't demonize this fight, flight or freeze system. It's really important and it's really needed. And stress is something that actually is not a bad thing. Stress is a really healthy, normal response. It's all about how we kind of react to that stress when we experience it and how long it takes for us to come back down and kind of allow our bodies and our minds to not carry that over for too long and not spiral. So we are going to experience stress. It's more about how do we cope with that? So balancing our nervous systems. And in Western medicine, this has been widely studied and it has been shown to reduce heart rate and reduce blood pressure, reduce stress and increase our resilience. So it's really useful. What we'll do first, we'll cover the right nostril with the index finger. And we'll just breathe in and out, okay? Don't worry about how fast or slow you're breathing. Just naturally noticing how it feels to breathe through that left nostril. And it might be already that you notice that you've got some restriction in that nostril. There's a little bit of almost turbulence. If that's the case, get your tissue and blow your nose. And start again. Once you have got comfortable with just breathing in and out through that nostril, we're then going to time the breath. So we'll breathe in for two and we'll breathe out for four. And again, we will do two rounds of this with four breaths in each round. And I do invite you to double the time afterwards if you feel like that's within your body today. Come with me. So we breathe in normally. And out fully. And then we breathe in deeply for one, two and breathe out for one, two, three, four. Breathe in again, one, two, out, two, three, four. In deeply, two, out, two, three, four. Last one, in, one, two, out, two, three, four. Lovely, uncovering that nostril, breathing normally. And my tip with this one is when you're breathing in, try and breathe in really deeply. And when you're exhaling, really take your time with that breath. So if you breathe out slower, you feel like you can breathe out for longer, okay? So again, we're covering that right nostril. And your choice to count within your head for two breaths, two seconds in and four seconds out. Or you can come with me for four seconds in and eight seconds out, okay? So when you're ready, just breathing in normally. And out fully. And in, two, three, four and out, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. In, two, three, four, out, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. In, two, three, four, out, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. In, last one, three, four, out, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Let that hand go down, big breath in. Full breath out. Bringing your attention again to those nostrils as you breathe in and out. See if you can breathe out just through the nose and in just through the nose. And see if you can notice any subtle changes between the right and the left nostril as you breathe in. Hopefully that left nostril feels a little bit more spacious, like we can get a little bit more oxygen in. And the great thing is the more oxygen we can get in, the more we can get more oxygen into our blood and into our tissues to help our brain to work, to help our organs to work, to help us feel nice and awake. Lovely. Amazing, we're going to do the same on the other side. So cover that left nostril this time. We're breathing through the right. And first, just breathing normally. Noticing if there's any restriction or if it feels different from the other side. A chance to blow your nose if you need to. Okay, guys, and again, we'll breathe in for two and out for four, for three, sorry, four rounds. So before we start, big breath in together. Full breath out. And a big breath in, one, two and out, two, three, four. In, one, out, two, three, four. In, one and out, two, three, four. Again, in, two, out, two, three, four, and relaxing. Okay, and just noticing the breath, noticing how our minds feel. Option now to either stick with your breath in for two and out for four or come with me to do in for four and out for eight, for four rounds, okay? So covering that nostril again, big breath in, big breath out. And as we breathe in for two, three, four. And out, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight. In, two, three, four. Out, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight. Good, last two, count in your own head. Out really slowly, let your body sink down as you breathe out. In fully. And out slowly again. Lovely, when you've come to the end of your last breath, just noticing those nostrils again. Focusing on that airflow in the right and the left nostril and out. Lovely, and bringing your hand to your belly. And breathing in, deep down into the base of the spine. And out. Lovely, hopefully, we've got more of a deeper belly breath. Keep going with that deep breath into the belly and out. And then just stop controlling the breath, just go into your natural breath and just see how that hand on the stomach is moving. As I explained to you how this works within our bodies. So when we breathe in, we've got our diaphragm muscle, like here, like little dome. And before the lungs expand, the diaphragm flattens and the belly bulges out as the lungs expand. So we breathe in, it flattens, the belly comes out. And as we breathe out, it domes back up and the lungs compress. Okay, so breathe in, diaphragm flattens, belly bulges. Breathing out, diaphragm relaxes, lungs contract, belly, belly softens. Lovely, in again. Lovely, guys, amazing, okay. So that's it for my breathwork. I just want you to spend the last few moments having a think. And I've got a few questions for you. Welcome to answer them in your head, on your bit of paper. Or if you want to share, you can pop them in the chat. Now's also a really good time to ask any questions if you need to. So what I want you to think about, just one minute to think about or write down. You know, when you are stressed, what physical signs do you feel within your body? You know, so I've touched upon the breathing, the shallow breathing and the breathing into the shoulder, the fast breathing. But we can feel lots of different signs, maybe some tingling in the fingers, maybe a lump in our throat and maybe that stone in the pit of our stomach, heart racing. Everyone's different and we will all feel slightly different things. So just a few moments to have a little think about that and write it down. I will recut the exercises for you guys as well. Absolutely, it's one of my next questions. Cool, thank you for your questions, keep asking if you need to. We'll go through these, my questions to you and then I'll answer your questions back. Lovely, so hopefully you've got in your head or written down those signs that you have when you are stressed, okay? The next question is, what techniques that you have learnt today resonated with you? What made you feel good? What made you feel calm? We'll go through the techniques. The first one was our 360 degrees breathing, so breathing into the shoulders, breathing into the chest, breathing into the stomach, the sides and the back. That was number one, our 360 degree breathing. Our next one was our diaphragmatic breathing, belly breathing into the stomach and out slowly. So number two was our diaphragmatic breathing. Number three was our hummingbird breath. So plugging the ears and humming. And our number four was our single nostril breathing. So just have a, just a few seconds to have a little think about what worked, what felt good for you today. Oh yeah, and box breath, how could I forget, box breathing? Thank you Denise, amazing, lovely. Thank you, okay. The next one is, when we, thinking about these techniques and when we feel stressed. When we feel stressed, do we think that we can intervene by using any of these techniques? And if so, I want you just to think of a quick action plan. So when you're next feeling a bit stressed, overwhelmed or just not completely in your body, what techniques would you like to use? And I always think the lovely thing about the diaphragmatic breathing is that actually you can do it and you can do it even at work or sat at your desk and no one will know you're doing it. Once you get used to that movement, you can just, you know, you don't even have to have your hand on your stomach. You just notice that you're breathing into your shoulders, that your heart's racing and you just start tuning in with the breath, trying to breathe deeply and that can really, really help us. Amazing. Okay, and cool, what I'll do now is I'll go through your questions. So Denise said, how many times per day should you do these breathing practices? If you're trying to make it a daily practice, good question. I would recommend even just five minutes a day to start with every day. So think of a time within your day that you have five minutes, just pop on a timer and just breathe. Make sure you're in a relaxed environment, make sure you don't have any distractions. Think of where it can fit into your day for you. Whether that's, you know, some people will do it in the morning, some people that I know will drive, don't do it while you're driving, but you drive to work, you park up and before you get out of the car, you do your breathing practice. And some people will do it after work, you know, you're sitting on the bus or you're in the car, you're not driving. You just, before you go, just do some breathing practices. Think of where you can fit that into your day for you. Hopefully, Emma, you're happy with the breathing practices now. Let's see what else, thank you for everyone that's replied in the chat box. Sometimes if I'm up against it time-wise, it's hard to take time to do this sort of thing. Yeah, Emma, you're completely right. I think that's, it's so good to know all of these things and it's like, we all wish that we could do all of these amazing wellbeing things and there's so many tools like, you know, through this, through these workshops, you've learnt so many things. But it's, the real challenge is finding the time to fit it into your day. So the best thing to do is have a little think today, right now, where you can take those five minutes every day and just build a habit. The key thing is just to really fit it into a part of the day that you already do. So it's quite natural and it can become a habit. And yeah, and also when you do feel stressed, recognizing those physical symptoms and seeing if you can intervene, stopping that stress cycle by doing any of these techniques, whether it's from my talk today or someone else's that you found really, really helpful. Thank you, guys. Before I go, I just want you to say thank you for everyone who joined me. This is actually one of my first online presentations. So I've, you know, very new for me and very unusual to not see everyone's faces. But thank you, I'm really glad you enjoyed it. If you have enjoyed this class and you want to learn more about your body, your breath, yoga or even physiotherapy, I would like you to follow me, my business, my company is called Bodhi Physio. We do classes, if you want to learn more about the vagus nerve. I think my name is in my, my little, it should say Amy Martin Bodhi Physio. You can find me on Instagram. And if you would like to watch this back, it will be recorded. So you can go through any of these techniques and my links will be linked below. Thank you, everyone, all right, bye bye. Feeling the love, thank you. You have, oh, I have to end it, okay, bye, guys.